Good evening, ladies and gentlemen. Welcome to the Cabarrus County Schools Board of Education Business Meeting for tonight, January the fourteenth, two thousand and thirteen. We're already into the new year, and I'd like to, at this time, call the meeting to order. And we're gonna have a moment of silence. I didn't know this particular lady, but Ms. Nancy Patterson, she was a teacher at Concord High School, and she passed away, I think it was December the twenty-sixth, or something around that time. I didn't know Ms. Patterson, unless, if you will, join me in a moment of silence in recognition of her. Okay, thank you, ladies and gentlemen. Okay, now, we're gonna do our opening ceremony, and we have cadets from four different high schools tonight. We have Cadet Second Lieutenant Joey LaCarter from Central Cabarrus High School. We have Cadet Major Caitlin Cook from the Mount Pleasant High School. Cadet Senior Master Sergeant Matthew Luke, Northwest Cabarrus High School. And we have Senior Airman Quinn Hemler, and he's from J. Robinson High School Junior ROTC Programs. Also, the leaders are, from Central Cabarrus, Master Sergeant Carlos De La Cruz and Lieutenant Nelson English. From Mount Pleasant High School, Chief Master Sergeant Kevin McLaughlin, and Lieutenant Colonel Malcolm Snell. From Northwest Cabarrus, Senior Master Sergeant Corinne Smith and Lieutenant Colonel Calvin Martin. And from J. Robinson High School, Master Sergeant Wayne Altrum and Lieutenant Colonel Scott Rose. Would you all join me as we bring in the presentation of colors?
Order.
Just to reiterate, you know, on the ROTC, Junior ROTC cadets, you notice all four different high schools, the different headgear they were wearing, and different high schools like that, how they could work together so good, you know, so they got a bright future ahead of them. Okay, board members, we're gonna move on into our agenda here, and the first item of our business tonight is to set the agenda. Do I have a motion from the board that we accept the agenda as it's presented?
Same moved.
I have a motion in a second. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Okay, the agenda is set as presented for our board clerk. All right, the next thing on our list is the recognitions part, and I see that we have Ms. Ronnie Boone, and she's coming to the podium where we have our Impact Through Education Awards, and she's gonna be making these recognitions tonight. Thank you, Ms. Boone, for being here.
Good evening. Thank you, Board Chairman, Board members, good evening, audience members. Tonight, we will be recognizing Impact Through Education Award winners for Concord Middle School and W.M. Irvin Elementary School. Before I begin, I would like to say thank you to our sponsor for the Impact Through Education Awards, which is Concord Printing. We do appreciate their generous support of these awards. We're gonna begin tonight with recipients from W.M. Irvin Elementary School, and at this time, I'd like to invite any members of the Irvin Elementary Administrative Team to please come forward to stand with their students and staff. Hey, stand on the tape for us. Our first honoree from Irvin Elementary School is Sarah Kate Jewell. Would Sarah Kate and her family please come forward?
They're not here. I would be accepting for them.
Oh, okay. Well, we want to go ahead and honor Sarah Kate, and I would just like to read her bio anyway, if that's okay. Sarah Kate Jewell is ten years old and a fifth-grade student at W.M. Irvin Elementary School. Sarah Kate has many interests outside of school. Two of these are dancing and anything Disney. Sarah Kate is a dance student at the Piedmont School of Dance and Music. She is dedicated to becoming the best dancer she can be, spending three to four nights a week taking lessons and practicing for performances. She just recently danced in the Piedmont Dance Theater's yearly production of the Nutcracker Ballet. Sarah Kate danced in the roles of a blind mouse, an angel, and one of Mother Ginger's children during this year's performance. Her love of dance is evident in her daily activities, whether she is drawing dancers during recess, or trying to walk on point as she travels throughout the building. As much as Sarah Kate loves to dance, she is equally captivated by anything that pertains to Disney. Sarah Kate visits Disney World at least once a year with her mother, sister, and grandparents. If there's something you want to know about Disney or Disney World, Sarah Kate is the one to ask. She makes an impact at Irvin Elementary School every day. Her smiling and bubbly personality is just one way she makes a difference. She has the personality to make anyone stay brighter just by being around her. Her infectious laugh is contagious. She is a kind and gentle student who goes out of her way to help classmates and anyone she comes across at Irvin. She is the first one to step up and help a new classmate get acclimated to classroom procedures, as well as Irvin's school procedures. Sarah Kate is a great role model and mentor to younger students. She volunteers in a second-grade classroom each morning. She is a pleasure for teachers to teach. She's the type of student who gives everything her all and does not stop until she has done her best work. She also has a way to bring out the best in other students. When working in small groups, she encourages her classmates to push themselves and helps guide them without taking over. She is a great leader, and all of her classmates love to work with her because she isn't bossy, and they know that if they work with her, she will make sure that everyone is treated fairly, and everyone will be able to contribute to the assignment. W.M. Irvin Elementary School is proud to present Sarah Kate Jewell with the Impact Through Education Award. Our next honoree from Irvin Elementary School is Izzeje Nawaja Inwerem. Would Izzeje and his family please come forward?
Izzeje is ten years old and a fourth-grade student at W.M. Irvin Elementary. He has many interests outside of school. When he is not studying, he enjoys being outside, running, and riding his bike. He also enjoys traveling. He and his family have traveled to many exciting places, such as Boston, Atlanta, Durham, and Nigeria. Izzeje was chosen to receive the Impact Through Education Award because he is a great role model for students. He always stays above the line by making great choices. He studies hard and has an amazing work ethic. It came as no surprise to those who know his family that he is receiving this honor. He is the third child out of the Nawaja Inwerem family to be chosen for the Impact Through Education Award. Though his family has a tradition of high standards, he has earned this award on his own merit. He holds himself to a very high standard and challenges himself to excel in all areas. He has accrued more than five thousand points in first in math, which is part of the Math Twenty-Four Program. He is an honor roll student, and his treatment of others must also be mentioned because not only is he a student leader, he is also very respectful of both his teachers and his peers. Izzeje's example is one to be followed and imitated. All who know him are thankful to have him in their path. Congratulations, and we are so proud of you for receiving this award for Irvin Elementary School.
Our next honoree for Irvin Elementary School is Ms. Crystal Turney. Would Ms. Turney and her family please come forward?
Crystal Turney joined Irvin Elementary Staff in August of two thousand and eleven. Prior to that, she worked for many years at Beverly Hills Elementary. Crystal has been instrumental in changing the role of the technology facilitator at Irvin Elementary School. She puts classroom instruction and technology integration first for teachers at Irvin. When staff members are unable to find Crystal during the day, they know that they can find her co-teaching a lesson in a classroom, or sitting in on a PLC meeting, or helping teachers find just the right resources for a classroom lesson. Crystal collaborates regularly with Irvin's media specialists as well. This year, the two of them have been busily developing a twenty-first-century vision for the media center that seamlessly meshes technology and digital literacy skills. Crystal was an overwhelming choice for this award. Her desire and dedication to keep Irvin on the cutting edge best describes how she makes an impact through education. Congratulations, Ms. Turney.
And our final honoree for Irvin Elementary School this evening is Ms. Rose Cummings. Would Ms. Cummings and her family please come forward?
Only one word can describe Rose Cummings: amazing. Rose leaves her fingerprints on the lives of students, parents, and staff. She diligently works with students, always using encouraging words and pushing them to learn. She accepts nothing but their very best, every day, every time. It is evident when you see Rose interact with students that she loves them and loves teaching. She instills a love of learning in the kindergarten students at Irvin that encourages them to be lifelong learners. Rose is a beautiful part of the fabric of Irvin Elementary School. She serves as Irvin's bilingual interpreter. She sits in on numerous conferences, IEP meetings, makes phone calls, and translates numerous letters for Irvin's English-language learner families. She makes these families feel at home and a part of the Irvin family. One colleague summed it up perfectly when she said, "What would we do without Rose? She is vital to the success of our ELL students and their families." Rose makes a major impact in education. Her dedication, strong work ethic, and passion for people and children are evident in all that she does at Irvin Elementary. She is a gift, an example, and we are proud to present her with the Impact Through Education Award. Congratulations.
Next, we will recognize Impact Through Education Award recipients for Concord Middle School, and I'd like to invite any members of the Concord Middle School Administrative Team to please come forward. Our first honoree from Concord Middle School is Tayshaun Alexander. Would Tayshaun and his family please come forward?
Tayshaun is an eighth grader at Concord Middle School. He sets high goals for himself in both sports and academics. He works hard in classes and is always willing to assist other students in their learning. He is well-mannered and a joy to teach. Congratulations, Tayshaun, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Concord Middle School.
Our next honoree from Concord Middle School is Samantha Manis. Would Samantha and her family please come forward? She's not here? Okay. Well, we'll go on and read her bio and present you with her award. Samantha is currently an eighth grader at Concord Middle School. She is a lovely young lady who displays a great attitude in class every day. She's a great student to have in class and is enjoyed by her peers and teachers. Congratulations, Samantha, on receiving the Impact Through Education Award for Concord Middle. Our next honoree from Concord Middle School is Ms. Kelly Van Hoi. Would Ms. Van Hoi and her family please come forward?
I have one that's not coming.
He needs to come.
Kelly Van Hoi came to Concord Middle School in nineteen ninety-eight as an eighth-grade science and middle grades health teacher. She also served as the head athletic trainer. Kelly's strong passion for students has been reflected in her classroom with continually changing and adjusting her teaching style to meet the needs of her students. She has impacted the student body and faculty by building strong relationships in both the school and the Cabarrus County community. Her positive demeanor creates an environment that is enjoyable, and it makes everyone want to take part in her excitement. Kelly is a great asset to Concord Middle School and to the Cabarrus County school system. Congratulations, Ms. Van Hoi, we're very proud of you.
And our final honoree from Concord Middle School this evening is Ms. Gloria Wassel. Would Ms. Wassel and her family please come forward?
Mrs. Gloria Wassel began working at Concord Middle School as a volunteer in nineteen eighty-one, and as a result of her dedication and commitment to the students and staff, she was offered a job as an administrative assistant in nineteen ninety-seven. She has worked as an administrative assistant for five years before transferring to a role as an enrollment specialist for the last ten years. Mrs. Wassel has a strong commitment to the school, students, families, and teachers within the Concord community. She is always looking out for the best interest of students to ensure that they receive the best education Concord Middle has to offer. Congratulations, Mrs. Wassel, and thank you for making an impact through education at Concord Middle School.
Thank you, Ms. Boone. Thank all of you, award recipients, tonight. Thank your families for being here, and thank Concord Printing for being our sponsor on this. And anyway, we have a couple more awards that we have tonight. The next one here will be the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month Award, and we'll have Dr. Barry Shepherd, our superintendent, and Ms. Kathy Auger to make this presentation.
Good evening. Tonight, I'm pleased to present the Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for Cabarrus County Schools. As always, we appreciate Hillbush Ford's generosity and thank them for saluting one of our wonderful teachers each month. Mr. Vaughn was unable to be with us this evening, so Dr. Shepherd is presenting the award on his behalf. The Cabarrus County Schools' Hillbush Ford Teacher of the Month for January two thousand and thirteen is Jessica Enlow. Mrs. Enlow, would you and your family and any members of your school's administrative team please come forward? Jessica Enlow is a science teacher at Cox Mill High School. She was nominated for this award by one of her students. In his nomination, the student wrote, "Last year, I had the pleasure of being taught by Mrs. Enlow in honors biology. From day one, I felt that I was in an empowering learning environment because of her positive attitude, rich knowledge, desire to help her students, and obvious love for teaching. I felt comfortable and engaged in every single class. I was able to make a one-hundred on the Biology EOC because she had prepared us over the course of the semester and offered ample opportunities to review and expand our understanding of the material." He then continued, "Mrs. Enlow's passion for science and teaching is well-evident because she goes above and beyond to help her students grow through her effective methods and genuine concern over their well-being. Over the past summer, I emailed her for help in chemistry before the school year even began. She took the time out of her schedule to send me links to websites and textbooks, so I was able to study and ready myself for honors chemistry in the fall semester." I believe that Mrs. Enlow should be recognized for her outstanding dedication to her students. Ms. Enlow, please accept our congratulations and our thanks for your dedication to your students. We're honored to have you as a part of the Cabarrus County Schools' family. Thank you.
Okay, board members, we're moving along to four point three. Dr. Shepherd's gonna make a presentation for the Board of Education for the North Carolina School Board Association Training Awards. Dr. Shepherd, did you want me to come down to the front?
You can just park.
Okay, okay.
During the North Carolina School Board Association Annual Conference in November... During the North Carolina School Board Association Conference in November two thousand and twelve, the following members of the Cabarrus County Board of Education were presented with the Advanced Achievement Awards based on successful completion of school board training for cumulative hours through the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve academic year. First, I want to present the Award of Excellence to Ms. Carolyn Carpenter for successful completion of school board training during the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve academic year. Ms. Carpenter? And next, I want to present a certificate of advanced achievement to Lynn Shu for successful completion of school board training during the two thousand and eleven, two thousand and twelve academic year. Mr. Shu?
I appreciate that. Dr. Shepherd, thank all of yous for your support over the years, and, you know, for the new board members, this is something that you'll have to look forward to with all the North Carolina School Board Association meetings and National School Board Association meetings, and meetings, 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 but that's how you learn, though. And so, we appreciate all that everyone does to support us. Okay, we're gonna move along to the five point one, whereas we have the approval of the minutes for the December third, two thousand and twelve work session and the December tenth, two thousand and twelve business meeting. Board members, does anybody have any comments, questions, corrections, or do I have a motion that the minutes be approved as presented?
I second that.
Okay, Mr. Kiger made the motion. Ms. Carpenter seconded the motion. Do all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the meeting minutes stand approved as they are, Ms. Monroe. All right, the next section, six point zero, six point one, is the board comments from the board chair. I think I don't have anything to say tonight. I'm just happy to be here, and I want to wish everyone a happy, new, prosperous new year, and I'm sure Dr. Shepherd, he has some comments, and he's next on six point two. So, Dr. Shepherd, whenever you get ready, you go ahead.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I do have a few comments I'd like to make tonight. We're in the, in closing in on the end of the second quarter, as well as the end of the first semester. Our middle school and high school students will begin their exams next week, and we want to wish them all the very best, and appreciate those of you that'll be working as proctors and other capacities with their testing. I also want to congratulate our district spelling champion, Donovan Nickel. A fifth grader at Harrisburg Elementary School, and Donovan, along with 26 other elementary and middle school spellers, competed in our county spelling bee last week. Donovan will represent Cabarrus County Schools in the Charlotte Observer's Regional Spelling Bee next month, and we wish him lots of luck and know that he'll represent Cabarrus County Schools well. Also, congratulations are in order for two of our schools that recently received grants. Jane Free's Magnet School received grants in the amount of $6,500 and $1,000 from Barefoot Oil Company and Duke Energy, respectively. We also want to congratulate the Performance Learning Center on receiving a grant from the Verizon Foundation for $20,000 for STEM education programs at the school. Also, applications for admission into one of our CCS Magnet programs are still being accepted. Applications are available online at any of our Magnet schools, online or at any of our Magnet schools, so you can get those applications in either place. To access the applications online, please visit the Cabarrus County Schools' website and look for the Magnet application banner at the top. All Magnet applications are due February 1, 2013. Also, the 2013-2014 budget process has already begun for Cabarrus County Schools, and as a part of our integral process, we will continue to review operational efficiencies to ensure funds are being used wisely. Our classrooms, teachers, staff, and facilities are weathered from previous year budget cuts, and we are in need of repair. So, please support public education by contacting your local and state representatives. Also, in light of recent events in Connecticut, we've redirected some funds to provide quicker purchases and installation of previously planned-for security tools. CCS is always in the process of reviewing our security procedures. We will work closely with our local law enforcement agencies to continually improve upon and tighten our procedures to make our schools as safe as possible. And finally, a reminder to parents and staff that cold and flu season are upon us. In order to stay well, medical experts suggest frequent handwashing as well as covering coughs and sneezes. So, anyone with a fever or other flu-like symptoms should stay home and be symptom-free for 24 hours before returning to school. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Dr. Shepherd. Good reminders for all of us. Okay, we're going to move on to 7.1, board members, and also, you notice that was a reminder for you, those of you with all the handshaking and all, to hit that sanitizer right there. You know, it's up here, so it's there for your use. But we do have some guest speakers tonight, and I'll say, first off, thank you for being here. I have three registered speakers, and those following speakers are Douglas Matthews. He's a parent, and he wants to talk to us about school safety. Is Mr. Matthews here? Okay, here, and he's not here. We'll move on to the next one, which is Joanne Cassavant, and she is a parent representing the Moms Club of Concord, and she wants to talk to us about school safety. So, Ms. Cassavant, come on up and tell us what you want to tell us, and you got three minutes, and I think the mic is on, it's waiting on you.
Okay. My name is Joanne Cassavant, and I'm on the board of the Moms Club of Concord, and I'm here to talk to you today about an email that I had sent to you guys asking you about putting SROs, School Resource Officers, in the elementary schools. And as I went and talked to the principal like you guys advised, and he assured me that that would be the most significant improvement we could make in security at our schools for the elementary school level. He mentioned a lot of things about how elementary schools have a larger population of students than the schools that do currently have SROs, like the junior highs and the senior highs. And I do know that there's SRO assigned to go and check on these schools, but it's not one that's on campus and, you know, a presence. It's not the one, it's not Officer Joe, who the kids get to learn to know and trust and go and say, "Hey, how you doing?" And tell me all your problems, and hear about things in the community to help with things like that. So, there's a lot of benefits to having an SRO on campus. They can work on the Dare Program, the Great Program, bullying prevention. There's a lot of things with traffic assistance, with the cars and the buses, and the safety for the kids and the parents. Also, for event protection, I was talking to a lot of moms, they were saying, "Hey, my Aunt Sally walked right by at this, you know, event, and they didn't even stop in the office, and, you know, they had no idea whether she was here," you know, kind of thing. But there has to be somebody who's over all that to make sure no one's walking by that office, or no one's coming in the building in another entrance somehow, you know, or any, it'd just be nice to have someone over all to do that. Let's see, I'm sorry. Very, not a good speaker. Currently, I know that, oh, I said that, sorry. But as talking about the junior highs and the senior highs having them and not the elementary schools, you know, I was just saying, thinking that, you know, they should have this, be awarded the same security as the junior and senior highs do. And even, I was told recently that Governor McCourty is, I guess, looking into what schools have them and what don't, because, you know, with the national push for this kind of security at the schools, I mean, he'd be crazy not to look at that kind of thing. You know, it might be PR suicide on his part to not consider doing something like this. And I guess, in summary, as a board member of the Moms Club, you know, I get a lot of questions about, you know, local schools and security and people moving into town, because they find us when they move into town, and, you know, I'd like to be able to say that, you know, our Board of Education is doing everything possible to, you know, ensure the safety for our children. And I feel that if we don't take this measure to put these SROs in the elementary schools, that we can't really say that we're doing everything. And I feel like I just want you guys to take this into serious consideration. I know I had talked to you via email, but when my principal came back and said to me, "Well, that's the best thing you can do," then I felt like I needed to come and make sure you're taking me seriously, so. And I do realize also, I'm sorry, I might have gone over, but that in the past, some of the principals have asked for SROs, but it hadn't, it had been due to budgetary constraints. I did look up a bunch of things, and I'm sure if I can find, I found like three different grants that are available, asset forfeiture monies, stuff like that. So, I figured if I can find that, you guys definitely can find that. So, I just want to put that out there. Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Cassavant, for being here, and we'll take what you gave, information that you gave to us under advisement. Like, this is your time to talk to us, and it's not our time to talk to you, so we'll take it under advisement, okay?
Okay.
Thank you so much for coming tonight.
Thank you very much.
And you can rest assured that school safety is always a top priority for Cabarrus County Schools, because the safety of our children is the most important thing that we do. And so, you can rest assured that's being done, and what hadn't been done is being looked at, so we can get it done. Okay, we have one more registered speaker. I don't see him here, but that there is Bishop Roland Jordan, and he undoubtedly had a prior engagement, or he slipped his mind, but anyway, he's, when he says he's going to be here, he normally is, but he's not here tonight. So, we're going to move on to the next item on our agenda, and that is item number 8.1, which is the approval of the January 14, 2013 consent agenda, and that, we only had the budget amendment items on there. So, I'll accept a motion at this point that we approve the consent agenda as it's presented.
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Harrison made the motion. Do I have a second?
Second.
Who's second? Mr. Schumaker seconded. All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Are there any opposed? Okay, the consent agenda's approved, 7-0. Thank you for your vote on that, board members. Well, it looks like we're going to run down to the wire here. It's time for us to convene over in closed session, and tonight, we're going to convene in closed session pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A3, which is to consult with an attorney employed or retained by the public body in order to preserve the attorney-client privilege between the attorney and the public body, which privileges hereby acknowledged pursuant to General Statute 143.318.11A5, to establish or to instruct the public body's staff on negotiating agents concerning the position to be taken by or on behalf of the public body in negotiating the price and other material terms of a contract or proposed contract for the acquisition of real property by purchase, option, exchange, or lease pursuant to General Statute 143-318.11A6. Also, to consider the qualifications, competence, performance, character, fitness, conditions of appointment, or conditions of initial employment of an individual public officer or employee, or prospective public officer or employee, or to hear or investigate a complaint, charge of grievance by or against an individual public officer or employee. And our final action here is to pursue, pursue it to General Statute 143-318.11A8, to formulate plans relating to emergency response to incidents of school violence. And A9, to discuss and take action regarding plans to protect public safety and receive briefings concerning action to be taken. Do I have a motion that we convene in closed session?
So made.
Ms. Carpenter made the motion.
Second.
Second from Mr. Walter. All right, ladies and gentlemen, with that being said, I'll get the vote just in a minute. That will conclude our open session portion, and we'll see you back on February 4. All those in favor of that motion say aye?
Aye.
Okay, might have done it a little bit backwards, but the most important thing is, we got it done. All right, good night, everyone.